Okay. Okay. Calling to order the business meeting of Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? If you are joining us virtually, please feel free to type those comments into the chat box and we will read them into the meeting for you. Thank you. No. I know, I was waiting one second for Bobina to come back. Because we're just at, we're going to be at presentations. Okay. There being no public comments, we move on to presentations. The first presentation up we have is a diamond award.
This time, I would like to introduce Ms. Nicole Olivia, who is nominated one of our staff members from West Oak Middle School for a diamond award. Ms. Olivia, would you like to go up to the podium and share your reasons? Oh, that's fine. Take your time. We love being together.
Name is Nicole Olivia, and I am a speech pathologist here at West Oak Middle School. And I'm honored tonight to be presenting Patty Rudd with the diamond award. When I read the meaning of this award meant for someone who demonstrates exceptional professionalism, goes above and beyond their duties and sparkles like a diamond, I immediately thought of Patty. Patty is, as we lovingly refer to her, our fearless special education team lead here at West Oak Middle School. She manages difficult situations with poise and calm, remaining level-headed, all the while making it look very easy. She is a selfless team leader, usually the first one to offer help and guidance for us, always going above and beyond. Patty's passion for teaching is demonstrated in the way she cares for her students. Patty manages a classroom of students who each have different learning styles and a wide range of functional levels. She has taken the time to get to know each student so well that she knows what their interests are, and she uses those interests to help them learn. You often will walk into Patty's room and somebody will have like a paint by number or a puzzle or something. And I'll say, Patty, where'd this come from? So, oh, you know, I just stopped at the dollar store, Target, or of course, Amazon. Patty always puts her students first. She knows what they need before they even ask, and she manages their outbursts with flexibility, sometimes a quick shield. And she's very, very patient. I admire Patty for her teaching style, her love and care of her students, and the example she sets for all of us as professionals. She's very deserving of this award. Congratulations.
And before you, I just want to make a comment and add to Ms. Olivia's beautiful tribute and nomination of Mrs. Rudd. For the board's awareness, Mrs. Rudd was the facilitated distance learning academy teacher every single day for the students that she serves. And a real advocate, not only for her students, but also for our staff to come back into the building because it was safe. So I just want to thank Patty for her leadership in that and her dedication and her commitment. And she's a fellow Packer fan.
We're very confused by that.
You didn't know that?
No. I feel like she got less applause because of that. The Packer fan part. I feel like, I feel like when Bobina said that, we got a little quieter.
No, that's just our little bond. We have that bond together.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, our second presentation this evening is just as exciting. We have our student data assessment update from each of the principals. And so I'm going to have Dr. Jarakka lead that. But I don't know if Mr. Rogers is able to pull that up. Are you able to pull that up? Can you? If not, we all have it. Okay. We'll wait for Mr. Hanson to come back. But as you know, one of our goals and priorities, and even specifically a priority this year, is to give you more data, more often, more frequently. And so after our fall benchmark of the STAR data, the principals have worked with their teams to dissect it and look at instructionally where students are at using Edge Climber, which is the new data management warehouse. And so we've put a presentation together based on that, and then next steps in action of what the data means and how we're working together to address it instructionally. So, Dr. Jarakka.
I'll present as just a definition of terms. Context, and then the principals will share their individual school-level data. So. Sorry. The response to intervention, or response to intervention is really just an educational framework. It's really a question. It's about do students respond to intervention? So in order to answer that question, you really need to know which students need intervention. So the response to intervention framework levels kids in three tiers. And so in District 76, students in the 30th percentile nationally normed to the 99th percentile are considered tier one. Predominantly, those are the students who don't need intervention, who are within the general, within the general norm. Students in tier two are those students in the 29th to 12th percentile. Those students will receive some additional support. And then those students in tier three are those students who need the most intensive support. Although it's mentioned that the assessment data today is from the STAR assessment, we use and utilize other assessments as well to make decisions based on students' intervention needs. With that said, this assessment data is related to this year's fall benchmark. So they're just sharing the information that was, that came up from this fall's STAR reading and math assessments. So those assessments are given three times a year. Once in the fall, we'll give them again in December, the second week of December, and then we'll give them in May towards the end of the school year. Those assessments, the STAR assessment, is given in both math and reading. All right. With that, then, I will hand it over to Dr. Berger.
Thank you. So starting with our assessments for the fall, looking at the English Language Arts Assessment. At the early childhood level, there are actually two that are given. One, in the early literacy, which is those foundational language skills that are needed to develop the skill of reading, such as the alphabet, phonemic awareness, phonics, some of the simpler vocabulary, and some of the simpler comprehension of single sentences. There's also a STAR reading assessment that can be given that is showing more of those developmental skills and the application of those foundational skills. So this is where we would be looking at things more like author, literary argument, and again, stronger vocabulary and higher comprehension. So I wanted to introduce both of those because at the early childhood level, when students are taking the exam, for example, you could be giving the reading test, but the students are not able to answer enough of the questions correctly. So it will automatically put them into that early literacy exam instead so that we're able to measure. Perhaps they don't have all of the reading skills quite yet, but how much of the foundational skill have they already developed? On the other side, we could have some children that start in that early literacy test and then also are answering so many of the questions correctly that the foundational skills have been established, and perhaps they then have those stronger reading skills as well. So in the early childhood testing, we're able to see that on both sides of the spectrum for our students. So when we look at our data from the fall, first grade at the early literacy level, we had 28 students that scored within tier one, 22 that scored within tier two, and 22 that also scored within tier three. Also in first grade, looking at that reading component in comparison, we had 32 students that scored in tier one, three students that scored within tier two, and two students that scored within tier three. When we go and add the total number of students that scored within each of these levels of first grade, there are duplicate scores in here. So for example, if you had a student that scored in the tier one level, perhaps they scored at the 97th or 98th percentile. They were then taken into that STAR reading exam, but perhaps only scored in tier three because they had very strong foundational skills. But perhaps all of the reading skills for what's expected at the national norm at first grade was not completely developed yet. So when you look at our scores, there is a little imbalance in terms of total number of students and the total number of tests that were actually taken. And it's the same for second grade as well. When we look at the early literacy, there was one student in tier one, five students in tier two, and 16 students in tier three. In comparison to the STAR reading test, where there were 32 in tier one, 11 in tier two, and 24 in tier three. And as we expect, there were a higher number of students in second grade who were able to take the reading exam just simply based on developmental skills and age-appropriate levels of reading.
Quick question here. Who defines what's tier one, tier two, and tier three? It just seems the top tier is the 30th percentile. It seems awfully low for the top tier.
Sure.
The national frameworks tend to guide or give guidance that it's the 25th percentile and lower. In District 76, we actually utilize the 30th percentile. While that's seemingly low, it's also recognizing that it's within a norm, and it's also recognizing that kids may develop at different rates. So human beings are not static, and so as kids may fluctuate, they tend to, we're trying to kind of capture the top of that bell-shaped curve, which tends to be that, the middle of the road, so to speak. It is seemingly low. But again, we're following, generally speaking, national guidelines regarding RTI programs. And we sort of improve, or excuse me, we increase our tier, our tier one by 5%. I don't know if there's something else maybe I'm missing there that you might want to add if I haven't captured that.
No, not at all. That's awesome. And also, the only piece I would add is that students within tier one, while the 30th percentile does seem low, they are probably progressing at a faster pace than a student who's, let's say, in the 11th percentile or below. Those are your students that you really need. That intervention of the incredibly small instruction where it's maybe a two-to-one ratio of student to teacher, as opposed to a child who scores within tier one is still able to pick up on the concepts within the classroom and the small groups that we have with our collaborative learning environments in the classroom compared to the pull-out instruction.
I will say this, though, John. It is not our hope that we have tier one, 30th percentile, as our target for improvement or student attainment. Right? This is a framework which allows us, going back to the first slide. This is a framework that allows us to identify which students we believe need additional assistance in the class. This is not, we want every kid to be at the 30th percentile. So I want to make sure that that's clear as well.
Right. So, so we're basically, so we're saying that if you're at the 30th percentile, there's, there's a very good chance that you're, you can still progress and do better without assertive intervention. Is that right?
And one of the things I will, I will add to that as well is not only, generally speaking, what this says is if you're in the 30th percentile or above, the regular classroom setting with differentiated instruction can serve your needs. Right? That's not to say all instruction is exactly the same for every kid. But with that, then, those kids in tier two and tier three need other additional minutes to help them grow to grade level, or they need more intensive services.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So our next set of data shares the math STAR information. In first grade, we had 60 students in tier one, 22 in tier two, and three in tier three. In comparison to second grade, 34 students in tier one, 19 in tier two, and 26 in tier three. At the early childhood level, there is just one math assessment. There's not a separate type of assessment like there is for the early literacy and for the reading. So after we collected all of our data, we sat back with teams and talked about what is this data actually telling us about our grade levels? And of course, taking into consideration, just going through the pandemic and school reopening at the start of the school year, there was a significant increase in tier two and tier three for second grade, both in ELA and in math. And right from the start, we understood that we have some of our students in second grade who have just come back to school for the first time since March of kindergarten because some of those students elected to stay home for all of first grade. So a lot of those students are significantly trying to just get back into the swing of things, get into the routine, get into their habits and their practice of school, and realistically did not keep up with all of the learning that was going on through the online system, which we understand. So looking at all of this, things that we want to do to be able to close these gaps and increase student learning is increase guided reading for all of our tiers. We are currently examining our schedules in kindergarten, first, and in second grade, and looking at how we can make that block of time longer within the school day. Right now, it's at a 60-minute block. We want to extend it up to a 90-minute block if possible so that we have that extra half hour where we can be able to provide more reading support and more of that small group collaborative instruction with our general education teachers. In addition to that, we want to reexamine the use of literacy partners. Right now, in our program, we do have different teachers pushing into different general education classrooms to help and support. In some cases, those are special education teachers. In some cases, those are interventionists. In some cases, those are specials teachers, such as teachers who teach art or PE or music. What we want to be able to do is reexamine that so we can look at providing more support through our interventionists, through our special education teachers, and providing support through our specials teachers in different ways, such as providing adaptive PE, adaptive fine motor skills through our art teacher, also adaptive music to help with some of our children with behavior concerns. So we are looking to really allow them to teach more of their specialized field as opposed to just pushing in to that reading classroom. In addition, we want to provide more push-in services versus pull-out with our interventionists and our special education staff. It's very important, especially at the early childhood level, that our children are in their classrooms with their peers, also with their gen ed teacher, and are being exposed to the general education curriculum and experiencing things through differentiated instruction. So again, with the change in our schedule, we're hoping to provide more push-in service. And in addition to that, we want to have a block of time dedicated to each grade level called what I need or our win time, where we're going to be able to target specific skills with different groups within the classroom. So if there's students who need tier three intervention, it can happen during this time. If there's students that need perhaps tier two, it could happen through this time. With our interventionists no longer being lit partners, we would be able to make that happen. In addition, we want to be able to look at what do our tier one students need? So John, just like you were mentioning with that 30th percentile, what are the specialized skills that those students still need some help on to be able to go from the 30th to the 40th to the 50th to the 60th and continue growing throughout the school year? So we want to be able to really specialize what our children need, and that also goes with our building schedule modifications. We have a very short day over at Diamond Lake, and we want to make sure that we are taking advantage of every possible minute that we have. We currently have some blocks of time right now because of the 30-minute recess block that must be in there per the state with a 25-minute lunch. When it's all said and done, that's about 65 minutes with transition and everything. And then there's a whole another hour built into the day of specialist classes the way it currently is. So there's two large chunks of time that are taken away from instruction. We want to be able to break up that time a little bit more and be able to build in some smaller packets of instructional time. And then in addition, we also want to focus on our professional development. I have been working with our coaches who have been brought on that are helping with the guided reading block and really looking at what a balanced literacy program can and should look like at the early childhood level because we want to make sure that we are really focusing our day on what students need and not just necessarily going through curriculum or going through rotations within centers. We want to make sure we have everything differentiated and ready to go for our little ones who are still working on those foundational skills and still need that in order to be able to have significant growth.
And with that, I will turn it over. It's for Dr. Berger regarding the DLS report. Go ahead, Nikki.
Real quick question.
Sure.
What kind of things would you expect, like the top, like the tier one, like say 75% and above students to be doing during the what I need time?
In a lot of cases, the students that we're seeing in the higher ELA scores, they are great readers, they can comprehend stories, they can answer the questions. But when it comes to writing or written responses, reflections on what they're reading, even opinion writing, much of that is rather limited in comparison. So during that win block, it's a perfect time for those kids to be able to be working on the writing component that's built into ELA standards.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Berger.
Your turn, Mr. Prabha. Thank you.
So we will start off at West Oak Intermediate School looking at our reading data. And much like Dr. Berger explained, the only difference at our school is that we only have the reading assessment. We do not have the early literacy assessment. So in our reading assessment, you can see the data here. The good news is the majority of our kids are in tier one. But what we are looking at, and we see this in math as well, is you should have a pyramid shape to your tier one, through your tier three students. We have a bit of an inversion when we get to tier two where that number expands larger than, excuse me. It's smaller than tier one, but it's, tier three becomes larger again, so it kind of shapes back out. So what we really need to look at is who are those students that are in tier three? Where are those skills that they are struggling with? And one of the things that I'll talk about when I get to my last slide is some of the impact we saw with, looking at those exact students and where they're at throughout their school day. So basically, when we look at this, we can see that in, when you compare our three grade levels, they're all pretty much the same in the structure of that pyramid. The only difference is fourth grade, actually by the numbers, has a pyramid shape that you wanted to. But tier three and tier two are only one student apart. So it's pretty, we're looking at the same struggles throughout each of the grade levels in reading. Do you want to flip over to the math? So we're seeing the same thing here. In third grade, we actually see the pyramid shape the way we'd like it to be. We have a nice solid base of tier one, smaller number of tier two, and even smaller number of tier three. That's how it should look. Obviously, you'd like to see even less numbers in the tier three and larger numbers as you're looking at the left of the graph. Again, in fourth grade, we see a little bit of that inversion, and we see a bigger inversion in fifth grade. So a couple of things that we're looking at is our students' day. Our master schedule is built in a way where we have some flexibility in what we can do within those literacy blocks, within those math blocks, where we don't have to really restructure the master schedule. But it's what we're doing in those blocks. So if you flip over to the what's next for us, I'll walk through a little bit of that. So obviously, the data tells us we have these increases in tier two and tier three. I think you're going to see that throughout the presentation here. It's a pretty common theme. So what we're looking at, and as I walk you through these three bullet points, I'll add some additional explanation to it. So we want to look at our tier two students and see how we can support them further in tier one. We also, and inside the classroom, where are those interventions that we can provide inside the classroom with their tier one peers while everybody's in the classroom together, experiencing some of those same opportunities? In addition to that, we've begun the after-school program for reading and math, and those are where we target our tier two students so that we're extending that school day. We're extending the hours that they're working on their reading and their math skills. Our tier three students, they're supported through tier one, or by design, they should be supported through tier one. Again, with in-class differentiation through the instruction, but also in-class interventions. But they also receive the pull-out services as well. We're going to continue doing that, but when I get to bullet point number three, one of the things that we need to do is reorganize our literacy block to include more tier two and tier three students in our tier one instructions. One of the things that we've noticed looking at the data this year is that a lot of our students, especially in tier three, who are not moving, are being transitioned through the building all day long. They're getting pulled out for constant services, whether it's reading intervention, whether it's EL services, whether it's special education services, and then there's always IEP-related services on top of that. They're not in the home room. When you're not in the home room with your peers, you're missing out on these opportunities to learn with your peers and extend your growth. So we are looking at restructuring the guts of the literacy and math blocks so that we are able to capture these students in with their peers, give them some of those similar experiences, more push and support instead of pull-out so those teachers are in the classroom supporting not just the tier three students, but also all the students in the classroom for a richer learning experience. Questions? Well, the good news is, like I said, in looking at the master schedule, I don't have to restructure the day at all. So the bones are there, right? So that's, that's the good part. So working with our literacy coach on redesigning teachers, they've been working on modeling, or excuse me, piloting a model of the literacy block that's going to incorporate more of the balanced literacy model in it. We, we throw this around all the time, our balanced literacy model, and it's, you can see it on our website as well. The minutes that are allocated for a program like Balanced Literacy, we can't fit in a day, right? So now it's like, okay, if we can't fit in a day, how do we capture all these things? So we're redesigning those literacy blocks so that we are systematically capturing all the components in Balanced Literacy throughout the week. We might not get every component in every single day, but throughout the week, we're going to hit them all, and we're going to do it in a way that makes sense and it's repetitive so that week in and week out, we're starting to hit that. So the next step is, once we have that laid out, where are we pulling these kiddos at? So if Mr. Cunningham is getting pulled for a service during the middle of the literacy block where we really need him in, how do I keep him in my classroom? And Mr. Cunningham's going to come support him instead of pulling him out. So it's, so it's kind of going through everybody's schedule and the needs of all our students and seeing how we fit these puzzle pieces back together. So we kind of, you know, instead of, instead of exploding the schedule out, we've exploded the blocks out, and then we're going to put it back together so that these kids and the people that need to be supporting them are in the same place at the same time. So it's, it's been a lot of work over the past couple of weeks to do this. We're getting very close. So we're actually, I have a teacher at each grade level who's piloting this. So they volunteered to kind of blow up their literacy block and re-put it back together and see how this works. So in this past week, we just started putting together the puzzle pieces. And then we started plugging the kids in and the services in this week. There's a lot of bumps in the road. We'll even, we'll smooth them out, but it's been really neat to see the excitement in the teachers that are like, wow, you know, I never looked at it from this angle before, and now I have the support coming in. So it's, it's a process like that. And once we get that ironed out at, you know, and we build a model for each grade level, then we'll plug them in and go. So I'm really hoping that, and this all goes together with our SIP goals as well. So we're rewriting our school improvement goals for literacy, our school improvement goals for math. This is part of the goal. So our intention, if you were to look at it on a calendar, is by December, you know, by this time next month, we are, you know, we're coming, we're ready to leave for winter break. And when we come back, we're ready to just go at all sections in the grade level with this. Dual language is going to be a little bit different because of the structure of their day, but in the gen ed classrooms is where we're really targeting this right now. But in the Gen Ed classrooms is where we're really targeting this right now. These are our tier two students. We only tier two. And the reason why we selected the tier two is because we were looking for a way to extend their day. Our tier three students are getting pulled out. So they're getting, in some cases, one-to-one services, or they're all getting small group services. The tier two students were getting some in-class interventions, but we're looking at, okay, where's a group that we can really move the needle on? Because some of our tier three students, they might be, so that's the 11th and below in the percentile. We have students that are in the second and third percentile to try to see, we want to see that movement into tier two. It's a little bit of a, we're looking for, you know, low-hanging fruit to move the needle on some of these kids. So those tier two kids, we thought that we really have an opportunity there. Now, in our after-school clubs, we only did use the STAR fall data. Usually you want to use a few sets of data, triangulate it and make it better. We did a one-off. So there were some kids that were identified that are not truly tier two students in reading or math. On the STAR test, they scored that way. But we have seen them, you know, on an everyday basis, score much higher and they're more tier one students. So we've left them the option, hey, you want to stay after school and practice? We can do that because we can differentiate the practice instruction for that. Or did you want to exit? It's, you know, either way.
Can I add to that too, Mr. Preble? Because we've seen that tier two group inflate, probably due to last year's instructional design or lack thereof during the pandemic. We felt like by identifying those tier two kids, they don't need as much intensive intervention or the requirements that may be necessary for, say, a tier three student aren't there. So the tier two after-school program might be a right-size fit for them to help move them forward without the necessary skill set of maybe an interventionist that an interventionist would provide. So knowing what programs we have available, what teaching staff we have available, it's able to help potentially impact that more overly inflated tier two group this year. So the after-school program, which I'll get to at the end, is a new program. We have not had it at this point in my experience here. But based on last year's situation, we felt it necessary to jump quickly into adding additional minutes for students in their schedules or in their day, and then focusing on math and reading to just give them some additional assistance in hopes that as we progress this year, those additional minutes, which serve as an intervention, will help support those kids in moving them into tier one.
So I just want some clarification. So with the reorganization of that literacy block to include the tier two and tier three students, for the tier three students, are they still receiving the same amount of intervention that they would have?
It would, yes, it would just look a little bit differently. So we have, we have an amount of students who are pulled out on a daily basis for, like, say, reading intervention. And instead of having a student who's currently getting pulled out five days a week, 30 minutes a day for reading intervention, that intervention is going to take place in the classroom so that they're able to work with their peers. And then the interventions is also in there, working with other students too. So we're actually able to capture more students at the same amount of time. Because if you were to be pulled out for reading intervention, you might be going in a group of three or four students.
Sure.
There might be eight students or even nine students or more in the classroom that would receive that service. So instead of all them going out in chunks, we're working on the same strategies and together with our peers. The other thing that we run into is, in some cases, we have so many different services pulling at the same time. You could walk into a home room of 20 kids and there's, throughout the day, there's eight kids in there.
Sure.
Which is probably great for the home room teacher to get a lot done with those eight kids. But nobody's getting those same experiences. And what we're also seeing is, we've looked at the data of the kids that are getting pulled out the most. We're not moving them. So it's not working, right? So what is working, the kids that are growing the most are the ones that are pulled out least. So how do we, how do we get that for all of our kids is what we're really trying to shape there.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how those, like the lowest tier three kids are still getting, you know, the appropriate amount or the extent of intervention that they would need, especially if they're not getting the after-school, you know, additional minutes.
And I will say this, so as Dr. Drucker said, the students that are in tier three get more than intensive intervention. But I'm not saying that we won't pull anybody out.
Sure.
But by pushing into the classroom, if I'm an interventionist and I push in the classroom and I'm in this classroom for a half an hour capturing 12 of my students, that's two hours of pullout that I just saved.
Yeah.
Net an hour and a half, right? So I've met 90 minutes, do something else with other groups of kids. So it's really building capacity in our interventionist day to contact more children. That's the design behind it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Talking about West Oak Middle School, as you can see, Mr. Preble did a nice job explaining some of the things with the data and the trends that we're seeing, as well as Dr. Berger. And, you know, the good, the fortunate thing is, is we anticipated really the potential for results to have a higher tier two and three coming into the fall. So we're able to adjust programmatically to address that. And just to give you an idea of what you're looking at, in terms of what's the difference, especially because you get to the middle school. Now, we've got a lot of the range of text changes on the STAR test. You get more informational text. And so if I was to take eighth grade, if there's a student that scored in the 70th percentile, typically that's about 10th, mid-10th grade. And they're comprehending text, typically informational text, which kind of shifts much more strongly towards scientific, more manuals, texts, things like that. They're showing higher comprehension. In fact, that's probably the number one area we see with the STAR test is how are they doing with comprehension, informational and narrative text? If you're in tier three, you're typically reading at about, or you're demonstrating comprehension, if you will, at about the third, fourth grade level. Tier two moves you in the fourth, fifth. But that gives you an idea of a little bit what you're looking at there, even the sixth grade level. So just to make sense of that, tier one, we could have a range where you could be up into high school reading, just to give an idea of the different services. And so we'll talk about some of those things that we have done to service students that really are at these different tiers. We can actually go to the next one for math. So similarly with math, also just to kind of go back to, I had the benefit of going last. So thinking about what John had said, with, if I was to take like the 30th percentile, 55 kids for, I'll use sixth grade, actually. So for sixth grade, 51 kids. If we were to raise it to 40th percentile, it would go to 40 kids. That gives you ideas about 11 kids sitting in that 30 percentile range. And we look at that group when we do our data reviews every six weeks to see, is that score in the 30s an outlier? Do we need to look at possibly providing intervention because they're just sitting in that range? And then, just to talk about tier three, so something that we'll do, and I'll get to it in a second, but all schools could share something similar to this. There's, let's take sixth grade again. There's 20 kids that were identified tier three. 12 kids are receiving an active tier three class intervention. The other eight kids is either an outlier score. So it was like one, they just kind of dropped after the summer way below. And so we progressed monitoring them after six weeks to see if that was really the case. Or they're already getting special education services. And so they're not going to go to a tier three class. So let's say tier three math, there's those 12 kids. After the first six-week benchmark, using our intervention we're using, and that's a dedicated class, nine of them have already moved to tier two. So to give you an idea of the, we're big believers in what we're investing in. And we hope that it's, we're going to see that growth throughout the year. But so yes, it's skewed, but we want to see growth. And we're not, never being through a pandemic, how long does that take? Just to give you an idea, from our late August test to mid-October test, we had, out of the 12 kids, nine moved to tier two from tier three. That's good. That drops a number down significantly and we want to see that. And we hope we continue to see that. We're building upon that success and we know why we're seeing that. We meet as teams to do that. So that happens at all schools. Again, I had the benefit of being at the end to kind of use some of the things that are being shared. So just to talk about what we're doing on the next slide. So we talked about the increase in numbers. They've answered the middle schools, we can do things by course. And sometimes it's easier to understand how we're approaching things a little bit. So the tier one level, just to simplify, workshop models are really effective workshop. It's actually used in Diamond Lake significantly and in intermediate school. But it's a great technique to be able to get students to read and write for conferencing with teachers. Really, just beyond that, we did add the communication arts class for our tier one students. And that focuses heavily on writing. In fact, students in the first month of that class had already written four articles and papers, four essays, and have really built up their writing endurance. And we're thinking about that, some of the feedback we've gotten from the high schools, is to really increase our students' ability and endurance writing and comfort with that. And so that's supporting our tier one, students that are in COM Arts. And if you are in the dual program, you're getting supported in Spanish language arts, which we made that adjustment for two reasons. It's called dual literature. We talked about this a little bit last spring, for those that were here. The reality is, we just, one, we had a pandemic. And so there's some language acquisition in Spanish we're thinking about. But also, this is, it's building your literacy skills in Spanish, which does transfer to English as you're building some of those core grammatical things. So tier one, we're supporting in that way. Tier one math, we did a couple of different things. One, we figured out what concepts we needed to review. We simply focused on that, the degree we needed to. We also worry about the lower our general education class sizes, which allowed for a lot better support for those students that, because they still take Gen Ed math, your tier two or three. You still take a general ed math class to be able to support them. Gen Ed, our math specialist actually pushes into a couple of those classes. And that also, and our classes and Accelerate and Honors have been able to function well and are showing good numbers. For tier two and tier three reading, we have a dedicated second class. If you're not taking COM Arts or Spanish language arts, you're taking tier two or three reading or tier two or tier two or three math. It's not a perfect science, what I'm describing, just simplifying it here. But it's a dedicated and focused class. And what we've done is we've decided to use Bonsement Penel, which if you are an elementary person, you know that term, if you put your kids to the district, it's a really nice vertical articulation that we needed at the middle school level. Because really, you want kids off the alphabet, if you will. Like you'll say, you're reading at a level, you know, N or O. And by middle school, you don't want them to be in the alphabet anymore. But you have a number of students that are. And so this system allows the reading specialist, the EL resource teacher, the SPED resource teacher, to be able to talk very closely about where our kids are moving. And we know every couple of weeks where they are, as opposed to just every six weeks when we do STAR. So that's been very effective at levels of text for them. And we use that regardless if you're an EL resource, because your access score says you need full-time support or intervention. Tier two math, we support in advisory. If they have band or choir, they can't have tier two during advisory. So they get that, we push Ms. Rogers into their class. We set up a couple of class periods at each grade level where she's actually in there with their class to be able to support them. Tier three math is a dedicated class she pulls students out of. And of course, special education is getting, they're getting support through special education as well. If they need instructional math and if they need resource support. And I mentioned EL resource, yeah, our EL students get a dedicated class. So there's kind of that fifth core period, if you want to think of it that way. Plus, we use advisory creatively as well. And then we've additionally, we'll capture kids for after-school and we'll use them after-school, whether it's Imagine Learning or they're getting support from, directly from Mr. Goldberg, someone else. So that's a little bit of what we do at the middle school level. Questions?
I have a general question. For the tiered two kids that are offered the after-school program, how, what's like the percentage that are accepting it and using those services?
My mic's on first, so I'll answer, but for mine, but it's very different, the middle school and the other two. So the middle school, because we're able to dedicate the class to that group. We don't, isn't necessarily required for them to come. We typically start with those we've invited that, schedule-wise, it really disallows them from getting the full support. And they need both interventions and it's just hard to service them properly. That's a small percentage of kids because we're able to do in our schedule. So it's, we're talking about five or six students. And then beyond that, we're identifying kids that need, they're struggling, their assignments to go. That's different than the other two schools. But that's a program we've always had there. So I would say out of the five or six students that are in that range, probably three to four are going. It's about half. And then we have our students we invite. That's very different than Kurt and Erica, if you want to answer that.
Well, we invited, I'm just going to look up some quick numbers here. We invited probably about anywhere from 12 to 18, maybe I think in 20 in one of the grade levels, students to join us for our reading program. Not all of them accepted, I would say probably on average throughout the three grade levels, somewhere between 90 and 95% of our kids. The parents sent them out, which was awesome. Some of them were, as I explained, we did, I'll admit that we did rush the identification a little bit. We went with the one data point that might not have been accurate for some of our kids. So some of those kids that got invited were like, yeah, this isn't really, well, they didn't say it's a fit for me. Parents were like, I don't think this is a fit. And like, you're correct, but they're still welcome to come. They didn't come, then we opened the door to the kind of next students up. They're like, okay, we have a whole roster of students. So, hey, would you like to come in if they were able to come? We're there. So where our numbers are, are not huge. But, you know, looking at, somewhere in our fifth grade is the lowest, it's about 11 kids. So not everybody in that group, I think we had about 15 identified. Didn't get much of a hit for the next students up. But, yeah, it was fairly well, we have 19 in our fourth grade. And third grade is also at 11.
So for our program at Diamond Lake, we only invited first and second graders. Because of course, at the kindergarten level, it was a little early for an after-school program, considering this was their, of course, their first year in school in many cases. Many of the children were not able to attend preschool because of the pandemic and everything. We invited 23 students in first grade for reading, 21 in second grade. We got about half of each of those grade levels. And in math, it was just about the same number, 23 in first and 22 in second, and got about half. Some of it, I think for us at the early childhood level, while parents do want their children to be involved, we have buses that pick up as early as 6:45, 6:50 in the morning, go through a full day of school. And then by the time they would go through the after-school program, which would end at 3:25 and hop on a bus to get home, some of those students wouldn't get home until four o'clock, maybe even after. So there was a lot of concern just about being a long day for some of our little cutie diamonds. But those that are participating have been working really hard and the students have been really dedicated to it. And our teachers have even been assigning some extra assignments at home. Once students get home and are able to continue with the practice, much of it that we've been doing through Imagine Learning, and they've also been doing that at home. So parents have been connecting a little bit more with the after-school program at the early childhood level as well.
And then the last slide before we, the last slide before we take questions. First of all, just let me thank the principals for presenting their data and then also the implications of that data. As you had heard, there are some pieces at every building that, while they may look different at each building, there's some general themes and some general threads that really run across all buildings. One of those threads tends to be the after-school program. Obviously, we are seeking to build an after-school program that helps us move some of those students into the tier one program rather than in our inflated tier two and tier threes. As Kurt had mentioned, we started the app, the program in October. We will take our benchmark assessments again in December. Look at the entirety of the student portfolio in terms of what they're actually doing in class, some of their teacher recommendations, and then that data that comes from the STAR assessment to retool in January for the second semester after-school program. So the first semester after-school program will come to a conclusion. We will re-identify kids that are in the tier two program and that will need assistance. So we will recalibrate to ensure that we have a more robust dataset that allows us to identify the right kids. So we'll continue that moving forward. One of the other things that we're doing at the district level and has been a real tremendous support is the instructional coaching program. I believe each of the principals mentioned how we are utilizing our instructional coaches to support the Balanced Literacy Model and the implementation of that Balanced Literacy Model, using instructional coaches to help provide professional development for our teachers in the Balanced Literacy Model so they understand the components of the Balanced Literacy Model and how to implement that program. Our instructional coaches have been working alongside our K through five. Our instructional coaches have been working alongside our K through five grade level teams. And then in in Mr. Cunningham's building, Julie Pecoraro has been working with the ELA team to build the COM Arts program that supports the ELA program. So these instructional coaches have done a real nice job of giving the professional developments, supporting the curriculum development, and help, they're assisting in strengthening our overall literacy program. And they're doing this, you know, K through, K through eight. They've, they've been a great resource. And it's very much appreciated from this side of the table that you all support the instructional coaching program. In addition to that, our instructional coaches work with our PLCs to unpack some of this data we've looked at today, but then also some of the F and P data, some of the map, excuse me, the math data to help make instructional decisions. Those instructional coaches help support teachers in their instructional practice. They support many of our new teachers in the mentorship program, and they also, as you're, you may be well aware, we have two instructional technology coaches that help support teachers in the utilization of technology in the classroom. So all of those things have been wonderful and helping to support teachers in the classroom, strengthen their instructional capabilities, strengthen our curriculum, help us better use data to make decisions. And so they've been a great, great resource and a much-needed resource that we, that we now have on our team. The last component that I have just for district-wide action steps, and I, I say district-wide, but again, each of these were mentioned previously with the building-level principals, is that we're just moving to improve our RTI practices, how we identify kids, and then how we provide supports. Each of the principals mentioned either scheduling changes or literacy block changes to help be more efficient with our time to target students effectively to not create redundancies in some of our, in some of our intervention programs. And so those are all things we're, we're continuing to look at. With that, we now have the Edge of Climber data management system, which, again, the instructional courts, coaches are supporting teams and their grade-level team meetings to help show them and walk them through how to utilize the Edge of Climber system, unpack data, show teachers how to utilize these, this data, how to going back to your question earlier, John, about, you know, what do we do with the thirtieth percentile and above? Well, how do we differentiate groups within our classroom to support them without sending them to a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention? So the Edge of Climber and RTI, the Edge of Climber data and along with the improvements in our RTI program are really our goal in terms of helping support our kids, helping to support our teachers to support our kids. So those are just a few of the elements or components that we are working on at this time from the district level that are obviously being played out in, in the building levels, at the building level, in each classroom, daily, weekly, and monthly. So if there are any other questions, be happy to, happy to take them.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much, Steve and principals. I appreciate the time and the effort and the energy that you were put forward in the presentation, but also that you continue to do with your staff every day. So thank you.
Okay, and that wraps up our presentations. And now we will move on to our business agenda. We have three items for action this evening. The first item is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, that motion carries. The next item up is approving the tentative, twenty-twenty-one tentative tax levy and setting the levy hearing date. I don't know, Eric, if there was anything you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a kind of a brief overview of the levy itself. I know during the levy hearing, I'm gonna do the presentation. So I wasn't gonna talk about that tonight. I truly just want to highlight two documents that, you know, important in terms of developing the tax levy. And just want to quickly walk through those and see if there's any questions either today or, you know, between now and levy hearing on December fourteenth. So just to give the briefest overview to start, the, the levy calendar is tonight. We are presenting the tentative tax levy for approval in order to get, adhere to the timelines, which is approving the tax levy. No more than fourteen days, but no less than seven days. That needs to be posted for the public. So the levy will be in the paper on December third, and then December fourteenth will be the final adoption. And I will, I have to file that before the last Tuesday of the month. So I'll be filing that week based on the Christmas break schedule. So the first document I printed off for you guys is really just some historical data as well as future projections. This is what I use in development of our five-year budget projections every year. So I just want to walk through a little bit on that, that gold line is what this lev, the twenty-twenty-one tax levy is. So we're really fortunate that we have great partners in Lake County. I've been in some other counties before, and it's a real guessing game in terms of what the EAV and the new property is going to be every year. So with Lake County, they've developed a new process where several times a year, they're sending us updated and estimated EAV and new construction property data. So what I do is I take that and I, I put a little bit more of a conservative approach on what the final numbers are going to be, because it always varies slightly. But in reviewing the accuracy of the last five years, they've been really within five percent of their final numbers. So it's been kind of, it's been really a nice partnership that we've had with them. So the estimated EAV is three hundred and nine million dollars. And the new construction is relatively minor this year at six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You can see that's trended down over the last few years. So I always like to show the historical data. And then I'm budgeting a million dollars of new construction every single year. So as a reminder, the districts held to, because of PTAL, we are held to five percent or CPI, whatever's lower, plus any new construction. So new construction's an important element. We could see some items that are, you know, due to the TIF, it looks at, there's some construction that's been happening, this light industrial, it's going on across Diamond Lake Road, they're building. So I'm still trying to gather some more information about that. But there are some new projects that eventually will hit our tax rolls. And then the most important number for this year is the one point four percent. That's the Consumer Price Index for this twenty-twenty-one tax levy. So it's gone down over the last, from the last five years or four years. But, you know, it's still a manageable one point four percent. And then future years right now, it's trending towards around five percent. So it's going to be the highest since nineteen ninety, if that holds true. The average over the year so far has been four point two six percent. So the last five or six months, it's all been over five. We're anticipating how that's going to shake about. But again, we're held to five percent or lower. So I'm anticipating right now, it's going to be four point five or higher for the next levy cycle. So what that all boils down to is there's the seat-all IMRF levy that we have to, we have to budget a certain amount for seat-all. And then we have our bond and interest payment. So all in all, the fourth, the last column there, it's fourteen point two million roughly. That is the total tax extension that we're going to be budgeting and projecting for this year. So all in all, that is a, the last column is a one point five, one percent increase over the prior year's levy. So all those numbers really start with the Lake County Assessor's Office. We work with some local projections that we've had. We work with the village and seeing if there's any other estimated new construction that may be on the horizon. But in the end, we've been getting really accurate data from Lake County, and that's what we used to, as far as these, the FY twenty-three projections, and then we use that for the next several years. So all in all, the, the next page is where we allocate those to specific funds. So that fourteen million, fourteen million one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar number that we get, that all funnels down, then that, then it's my job to allocate it to specific funds. So the two columns on the second page, the blue one and the yellow column are the two really most important ones. Everything else is historical data. So the yellow column, you'll notice in the very bottom there, that fourteen million one hundred and ninety-two thousand, that's the total extension we're estimating. And then what I do is I'll look at our five-year projections, and I'm putting all these numbers in different buckets. So I always start with the Ed Fund. We'll estimate how much we're going to need for this upcoming year for the Ed Fund, and then make sure we're keeping account future projections. So we're always balancing our fund balance. And then I'll use in, you know, the remaining funds to allocate it between predominantly the O and M and the transportation funds. So all that boils down to a nice, clean number. And then from there, I'll use the blue column. And that is what we are going to be filing our certificate of tax levy for. That's what I file with the county clerk's office. So I'm fortunate that we have, you know, the board's support on the balloon levying method, and the public has been in support of it as well. Not a lot of, not all districts use a balloon levy method, but I feel like as long as the support's there, it's the safest method to make sure we capture everything. So we don't really get a, a lot of situations where new construction is wildly different than what we're projecting. But again, it's the safest, safest methodology to make sure we leave absolutely nothing on the table. So I always budget around, you know, I try to keep it fifteen percent higher than what we actually expect to get. So I'll go over that a little bit more detail, a little less detail in the budget presentation, the levy presentation itself. But just want to give you at least a little walkthrough on how I developed the, the tax levy, the partnerships that we have with the county assessor's office. And just give you guys an opportunity, if not tonight, anytime in the future, if you'd like to meet to discuss this, I'd be, I'd love to do so. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer tonight. But otherwise, all you're approving tonight is a tentative tax levy. And we have a little, little under a month until the official one's adopted.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? No. Okay, then we will move forward. With approving the tax levy and setting the levy hearing date. Whereas the taxing district must determine not less than twenty days prior to the official adoption of the aggregate levy of the district, the amount of taxes necessary to be levied for the year. And whereas the Truth and Taxation Act requires a public hearing, if the estimate of aggregate tax levy exceeds a hundred and five percent of the amount extended the previous year, therefore be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School Board, the Diamond Lake School Board, District of Board of Education approves the tentative levy as presented and will hold a public levy hearing on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Moving on to our final item on our business agenda, which is a personnel item. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire and we have one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, and that motion carries as well. And that concludes our business agenda for the evening. We will now move on to board discussion. And the first thing up for board discussion is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year calendar.
So if you look at your first attachment, it is a draft of what we'd like for you to review and consider for action at the December meeting. The district leadership team coordinated together, and then we had it reviewed today with our professional advisory council, which is made up of teachers from each of the, three teachers from each of the three buildings. And this is pretty much aligned, if you look at the second attachment, to our feeder high schools as well as District Seventy-Five with similar start dates. I'm just gonna, there we go. So I'm not going to go through it month by month, but the specific points I want to share with you are starting school for staff on August seventeenth and eighteenth. We usually start on that Monday, the fifteenth and sixteenth. But what we're thinking of doing this year to extend the school year and to do the extended learning opportunities is having summer school and the extended school year for our special ed students start right away after school starts, just giving them a week and going the four weeks in June, and taking the entire month of July off and giving, we, we feel that this way, it would give families an opportunity to go on vacation as well as staff to go on vacation. We might get more staff interested in teaching the summer school opportunities. And then coming back the first two weeks of August, August first through the fourth, Monday through Thursday, and then August eighth through the eleventh, Monday through Thursday, and doing kind of like a kickoff to school starting. So it's kind of like a preparatory academy to extend that school year. So if that's what we thought, giving teachers who teach those programs that Monday and Tuesday, the fifteenth and sixteenth off, not starting right away, would give, again, like I said, more incentive for staff to teach those opportunities as well as parents a little bit of break. So the first day of school for staff would be the seventeenth, eighteenth, and then for students would be the nineteenth. And then, as you can see, you go through, it follows pretty much the same schedules that we've, you know, historically done with the holidays as well as late starts. We've aligned our holidays similar to what Stevenson, Stevenson has done for the religious holidays. We've included the survey that we gave out at registration time where, you know, families would like to take the religion, excuse me, like to take the religious holidays. So we've, excuse me. Included that for your review as well as aligned it with both of the high school calendars. So as you can see, the next probably differentiation would be because Christmas falls on a Sunday. We have one extra day for winter break, which would be Friday, December twenty-third, and then we would have eleven days for winter break returning on Monday, January ninth. And then spring break is also aligned with the regional office. So whatever, all, all Lake County schools have the same week, which is the last week of March. One change that I wanted to just point out to we, to you, if you looked at the calendar before four PM today, is when we met with the professional advisory council, we noticed that the institute day, early release day for February of twenty twenty-three was on February tenth. And so we just adjusted it to give families a little bit of a longer weekend for President's Day. So we moved it up a week to February seventeenth, and that'll be the early dismissal teacher institute day as well as the report card distribution day. So other than that, there's no real changes with the exception of we're going to be ending after Memorial Day. So it would go to Friday, June second. And then to avoid using emergency days, I put this in the comparison memo. If we have an emergency day needed, which, you know, now we know we're going to be doing remote learning, we would use December twenty-third if possible to come to school. So if we had to close the building for whatever reason, if it was before winter break, we could use December twenty-third as a day that students can come into school as well as staff. If it was before, we also said it could be March twenty-fourth, which is an institute day. We can come to school that day. And then we could also do April seventh as a non-attendance day. So those are kind of three flexible days that if we needed to have an emergency day for whatever reasons that the buildings had to be shut down, maybe not due to inclement weather, that we have some flexibility built in to not go to school after June second. Questions, comments? Staff work, yeah, they have work for additional days. So we can actually ask, I mean, you know, if we, we could, we could do a remote learning day for them, for staff, maybe on Monday, the fifth. We could add a day onto their calendar rather than asking students to come back. Is that what you're asking me, Mr. Candela? Is that what you're asking me, Mr. Condala? We could add it on to like June fifth, maybe as a remote work day or have them come in as an institute day. And that even could be something that we could, you know, talk to our attorneys about and possibly do an M O U. with them as far as a memo of understanding. Sure. Yes, I. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so if there's none, or if, you know, you've come up with any before the next board meeting, we're going to ask you to take action on this calendar at the December fourteenth meeting. And then we can make it public. And then also start our summer school planning.
Okay, and now we will move on to the resolutions for the joint annual conference on Saturday. So we'll go through all of them. And I have some notes as to how our, kind of how our discussions went. So I don't know that we necessarily need to open things back up for discussion. I'm just going to give like a brief overview of the resolution and then we can kind of come to a consensus as we have in the past. So the first resolution is that pre-service teacher education and license, license ensure and literature. Or literacy, sorry, not literature. That was recommended by the committee as do adopt. That was the the resolution that specifically talked about having teachers get a class on literacy prior to being employed. And so there's a second resolution that's similar, but but this one was, the onus was on the education part of it and not once they already were a teacher. And I think in our discussions, our district supported this. Does anyone feel differently or remember differently? Does anyone have additional comments on that or additional thoughts? I think Dave raised some good points. I think it's, it is eight, science of reading curriculum. Because that one essentially, I believe, pushes professional development, right? Yeah. So that one is essentially asking for funding for teacher professional development for two years to support teachers and learning how to teach the science of reading through phonics.
A S B. is saying that this is more restrictive. Number eight is more restrictive than number one. Since it proposes a very specific curriculum. So they're recommending no on eight.
I think they're recommending no on eight because essentially it would require us to fund like professional development and to do different activities after all teachers are already licensed. It's more restrictive, I guess. Yeah, you're right, because it's requiring curricular changes. I had, for this first one, I had sent you guys, I don't know had a chance to read it, the additional information that came from the district that sent this out. It does address some of the points Steve made. I don't know, do you guys have that email? I forwarded it. Email itself is from October sixth. I forwarded it, I think, at our last meeting, October nineteenth, so two meetings ago.
You seem like such a fundamental skill for teachers and especially in the areas that are specifically mentioned here. Early childhood education, early childhood special education, elementary education, English language art. Middle grade language art, reading specialist, reading teacher, special education, speech and language psychologists, English language learner teacher. Those seem like they are the ones that really should have those strong scientific background in teaching literacy.
Okay, does anyone have any more discussion?
Mention too, I think that this, like Joy, I think you mentioned, this really puts the onus on the schools to take a look, a deeper look at how they are presenting in their methods classes for reading. And even though, yes, it does involve perhaps another exam. I think that with with the universities looking at their courses, I think this is something that could be easily shifted to make sure that this is met. Because obviously, based on the, some of the data, it's definitely necessary. And like Dr. Draca said, even though, you know, new teachers are willing and able to learn these important fundamentals so that they can help their students. It probably would be better if they were introduced to them in an environment where they could be with their professors. They could go through their, you know, student teaching and really see some of these things happening. So I see this really focusing on letting the universities know that what their, their courses might be missing the mark. That's, that's how I see this.
You think about what we've talked about today and what we continue to talk about over and over and over again. Our core business is literacy and to make sure that the foundational elements of our teachers and their academic programs and their professional development is in that area. I don't think we'll certainly, I certainly will, I certainly believe that that would serve the best interest of our kids.
And I don't disagree with bolstering reading instruction. I, what I don't see is a connection between this requirement and bolstering that instruction. It's, it sounds good and it looks good, but they're, you know, on paper here to say, let's require pre-service teachers to take this class and pass this test. But there's no link here to say, okay, so if twenty-one states require it, how do students in those twenty-one states perform compared to students in Illinois? That, that's, that information has to be, you know, attainable, but it's not in the rationale.
Great. And that's a great question. Knowing, knowing that those instructional programs, the actual impact of those programs. And I have not read the element, but it would be probably in their best interest to provide some of that support. That is the rationale based on doing this, we've seen that those teachers that that have analysis on many occasions. They had an impact. And I don't have the answer right there, but I certainly can understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you know, I mean, all of us passed the test to get a driver's license and we learned the dangers of speeding and that we shouldn't do that. But I would bet there's not a person in the room who's never gone over the the number on the, on that, on that sign. So just because we are taught that information, exposed the information, doesn't necessarily translate to the payoff that we're looking for here.
Yeah, definitely right. And so hence the reason we have instructional programs to make sure that we if they're not getting it there, they're gonna get scratched here.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, I don't know if, listen, I'm not a teacher or an education expert, but it certainly seems that what's, what the state of Illinois is doing now isn't working. Given that National Council on Teacher Quality Assessment. Forty-three percent of university teacher education programs in Illinois earned a D. or an F. For how they prepared students. For reading. So while it might not be perfect, the resolution. Would it provide the potential for incremental improvement? It seems that some training, some well-intended training is probably better than, than not. Unless there was a reason why it got in the way of something or turned off folks from wanting to be teachers or coming to Illinois to be teachers. Like in, like the driver's course, I'd much rather my kids take the driver's course and hopefully be be a good student, be a good driver. And even if the course wasn't perfect, and even if they don't always follow the rules. At least there's a standard foundation that that, that they're following when they get behind the wheel.
Okay, do we have any more discussion on that? It sounds to me like that we have the, the majority of the board supports the resolution. If I am incorrect, please let me know. Okay, I'm going to take silence as acceptance. So then we will move on to resolution two, which is the Student Safety and Protection Plan. This one was recommended do adopt. It is that this A S B. shall support and advocate for legislation that provides school boards the option of developing student safety protection plans, which allow voluntary district employees in any capacity, the ability to carry concealed firearm and district property, provided the employee has a valid F O I. D. card and holds a certified Illinois concealed carry license and has completed all additional trainings and certifications set forth by the respective school board, one of which must include yearly act. and certification set forth by the respective school board, one of which must include yearly active shooter, yearly certified active shooter training. Only district employees who fulfill all requirements listed and receive superintendent and board approval would be eligible as an active and armed part of the Student Safety and Protection plan. And I believe that our district, it sounded like we had a consensus for opposing that resolution. And is, is that correct? Yeah, for opposing? I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Okay. If I'm wrong, speak up now. Okay, moving on to a resolution three, which is on school board member compensation. This one was recommended, do not adopt, this I believe was the broader compensation. Rational as opposed to the childcare, which is another resolution coming. So it was be resolved, the IASB shall support legislation that provides for fair and reasonable compensation for school board members, this shall help relieve the financial burden incurred by board of education members so that they can attend school board meetings, board committee meetings held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act and events regarding school district staff and other schools, other school board business not already compensated. This one I believe we did not support. Is that correct? Okay, great. Moving on to four, which was the board child, board member childcare reimbursement. This was recommended to be adopted. And it basically allows for IASB to support and advocate for legislation that allows for board members to be reimbursed for childcare costs as a result of participation in board meetings. And removing barriers to increase access and participation of potential, potential board members is core to the mission of IASB. And, and it sounded like the the new law, Public Act 102-0015 essentially already provides for this, correct? And so I believe we were in support of this resolution. Yes. Okay. Five was the remote virtual school board open meetings. Which I also believe we were in support of, correct? Okay. Sorry if I'm a little slow, the way that they did the ballot is not in numerical order, so it's confusing. And six is reorganizing the board from 28 to 40 days, so it's allowing that additional time period in case elections aren't certified within that time, especially in light of the fact that more people may vote by mail. I believe we were in support of that resolution. Okay. Seven was indigenous people curriculum inclusion. And I believe we were in support of that as well. Eight was the science of reading curriculum that was recommended, the do not adopt, that was essentially what we discussed at the beginning, except it's asking for professional development rather than universities looking at the courses and having an additional exam required for licensure. And do we want to have additional discussion on this? I believe we oppose this. Yes. But, but essentially we're opposing the resolution, which agrees with them. Yes, oppose the resolution. Okay. And the next one, resolution nine is the Health and Sex Education Curriculum. This was the local control of sex education curriculum. And basically, I believe this was the one that they that there was already a statute in place controlling this. And so that, that is, was currently signed into law. So to me, this was too late. Because they're basically lobbying against a bill that was already enacted. I have down here that we oppose this resolution. Okay. Seeing all the nods, cannabis sales. We discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, I believe. We had some kind of mixed feelings. I don't know if we're fully in support of adopting, it sounded like we maybe had a majority for that. But if you oppose this, would you let me know? Or if you want further discussion, would you let me know? Okay, then we're in support of that. The Clean Energy Infrastructure Federal Funding. This would be provide funding for clean energy, including solar panels, geothermal heat and cooling wind turbines. It looked like they, they recommend do not adapt. I have down that we were in support of this. I don't know if that was the majority opinion, because I don't think we had that much discussion. Do you, does anyone want further discussion? Does anyone oppose or have a different idea? Yeah. Why, they're going beyond this to the federal government? Yeah, with the new infrastructure bill, I don't know if that, I don't know the way the money is allocated there, if it's like at the state's discretion or if, you know, there are specific carve-outs, you know, to where the money would go, you know, to, you know, as specific as like a school district as opposed to, you know, a county or something like that. But some of this is probably, is covered in that bill.
Raises a good point. And it's not that I have anything. There's nothing to matter, in my opinion, with regard to the resolution, but is this what we want IASB to be focusing on, given the infrastructure bill that was already passed, sort of given
Right.
everything that's going on. I don't know if, if this would, would help push more members of Congress, you know, towards towards some of this, given that there's been a big deadlock, then that's good, but but, you know, this isn't a sword I want to fall on.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
You know, if you, if we put 11 and 12 kind of in the same basket here.
Actually, it was
and 13 as well. You know, I, I am in support of green energy, clean energy. I think electric school buses are a great idea. You know, I think most of the voters that oppose these are probably opposed to thing, you know, the green energy
The underlying piece.
charging, which I am not, and I don't know of anybody on this board that is against those things. I just don't know if that's the realm that the, you know, the Illinois Association should be, should be lobbying on this. That's, that's, that's my, I guess my question.
I guess then the question is, if it's not IASB, then who would be lobbying for those? I'm just kind of looking forward and there's there's some I'm not super familiar with the lobbying that the IASB does, but they're, they're already lobbying for like financing public education that says Illinois Association of School Boards shall urge the Congress of the United States to adequately fund public law and ninety-four, da, 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 da. It sounds like they're already doing it and now seems like a timely moment for them to be asking for those funds. So they're gonna do it, now's the time.
Okay, so it sounds like we're split here.
I, I mean, I'm perfectly fine abstaining from that, from this and
I mean, I don't know if there's a majority. I guess that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure there's a clear majority based on just the discussion. So I don't know if you will just want to indicate their position, support or oppose.
I, I, I guess I'm neither, really.
Well, if you had to choose one.
You might not have to, if enough people support or oppose.
Well, it's really, it's really a binary choice. You support or you don't.
Right.
So, so, you know, so abstaining is, is, is by definition a no.
Yeah. Basically, also, just to kind of clarify, the way that this will work is because these are on the do not adopt, the, the delegate, what the committee will do is they will put all of the resolutions that are marked down for do adopt on a consent agenda so that they could try to pass it all in one go. The things that are do not adopt will be voted on, you know, separately. So it'll be, you know, there'll be a different kind of discussion held.
So even number two will be part of the consent agenda?
It will be, but I would be shocked if someone didn't ask for it to be removed. You can ask for any of the items on the consent agenda to be removed.
A delegate like yourself.
Margaret is going to be our delegate, but yes, she can ask for it to be removed. I am sure that there are districts that will ask for it to be removed. It, in the last two years, it's been removed every time that I've seen, so, but that's how it works. So just to go through the process. But anyway, okay, so do we, would we like to support this item?
I support it.
Alyssa, do you have a position?
You know, I, I think dealing with infrastructure, I'd like to get more information about the infrastructure bill that was just passed to see if some of this is already in process, which obviously might be difficult to find right now. So I, I think I'm on the do not adopt because I'd like to see if it already might be in there, in which case there wouldn't be a need to lobby for something of this type, which is my only reason. Obviously, like everybody said, I think clean energy is fantastic. I just feel like maybe this is moot because it, or it may in some form or another already be being addressed. That's my only thought on it.
The bill definitely has funding for, for these types of clean energy things and for the electric charging. I don't, there's not like a carve-out though, that it would go to necessarily a school district, I believe is the caveat. So I think it would be up to the discretion of like the state as to how to allocate that, in which case lobbying the federal government would not necessarily help.
Now, I'll, I'll take the opposite side, even though I just one way to think about this, and, and I don't know what the champagne school district, what their rationale was. But one way is just keeping it top of mind, keeping it keeping it out front.
Sure.
And, and sort of in the faces of folks who make the decisions. That's a it's a pretty positive thing. If it, you know, if it's, if it, if IASB can only do six things a year.
Yeah.
Then I wouldn't want them, this to be one of the six.
Right.
But, but otherwise, you know, it's, yeah, it might also be covered elsewhere, but
Sure.
I would switch my vote to, I would, I would say yes.
Okay. I think based on that, we have a majority of saying do adopt. If you think I'm wrong, let me know. Okay, we're gonna go with do adopt for 11. 12 is the electric school buses. It's all, it's essentially all the same rationale.
Yeah, I, I would feel the same way.
So do we want to go with do adopt for that as well? And for 13 is the same thing. It's, it has an unfortunate title.
Right.
Landscaping for federal funding, but the underlying premise is like preventing flooding and, you know, which being in Mundaline, I think we've seen the impact of that. So do we want to support that as well? Okay, I'm gonna put down support for that. 14 is expanding the broadband internet access. I think our consensus was yes, as we saw with the pandemic, obviously, everyone having internet access is incredibly important, especially for our school, our, you know, our school districts that are in downstate Illinois where a lot of that was more spotty and they just didn't have the service providers. So I think we supported that. If I'm wrong, let me know. Okay, 15, child safe gun storage, I believe we supported that as well. Okay, 16 is school code review. And I think that this was, I think that I think that we are not in support of it. I think that we supported the underlying principles of it, but I think the issue that we had was that it was too broad. Is that correct? I can't even find 16 on the sheet. Here we go. Thank you. So I think we were recommending do not adopt for that reason. Okay, perfect. And then the rest are all of the the amending existing positions or reaffirmation of existing positions and those belief statements. And I believe that we supported all of them. So if I'm wrong, let me know. I'll give you guys a minute to do that. Anything stand out? Okay. So I'm gonna move on. If for some reason you see something, just give a shout. Um, the last thing on the agenda or on board discussion is the, the Board of Education calendar, and we're discussing the June meeting dates.
Yes, so I just wanted to share, I have a conflict on the first Tuesday. So I had spoke to Joy about it and I'm open to moving it to June 14th or just keeping it at one meeting on June 21st. So Joy had suggested one meeting was fine, but I wanted to get feedback from the whole board if that's okay, if we cancel the first June board meeting and then just have one board meeting in the 21st.
It looks like that's fine.
What?
He said one last meeting to go to. I think that's fine.
I, I said too, I said I would come on the 14th, but she suggested one, so I was, I was in support of that as well.
If anything changes, like Eric, if anything changes with the bills or something and you need us to meet sooner or twice in June for, you know, any kind of reason, just let us know and we can definitely amend, but I think we'll stick with the one meeting on the 21st. Okay. Um, yes, it'll be an all-day meeting. We'll have, we'll have breakfast, lunch and dinner. Um, okay. Ravi, it is the longest day of the year. Perfect, Dave. Perfect. It's gonna be the happiest board meeting of the year. Um, freedom of information Um, freedom of information requests, we had none. Notices and communications, just the usual reminder for the board meeting calendar. Then that brings us to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Again, if you're online, I think there is one. Yeah.
That was asked during the presentation. Do my media recite it out loud?
Yeah, please.
All right. Do you have a few, sorry, do you feel have, I'm sorry. Do you feel having a large majority of the tests and schoolwork now being done on the computer is impacting quality of work and test scores? Navigating computers, typing focus and concentration is different than writing out answers. That was my question.
Yeah, I think we will follow up and provide a written response to that. Just because I think that will give our team the opportunity to think about that and provide the appropriate reflection I think that deserves.
Mr. Hanson, do you have that person's contact information?
Okay. Okay.
It's just public comment.
Do we have any other public comments this evening? I do not see any. Okay, and then we'll move on to others. I'll let you go.
So in front of you today is just a very small token of our appreciation and recognition because yesterday was Board Member Appreciation Day. Isn't it great? You guys get Mother's Day, Father's Day and your birthday and Board Members Appreciation Day. So thank you from all of us, from our community, from our students and our staff for all that you do. You volunteer. I know some people think you get paid, but you don't. And we just want to thank you for your service, your leadership, your support of all of us and all that we were able to do for our students and our staff because of your support and our resources and all the things that we do. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And you can have dessert tonight in closed session.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employer or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn, please, to executive session? Yes, sorry.